After six thirty. All right, good evening, everyone. This is the June twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Planning Board. I'll start with a alphabetical roll call of who's here. Tom Callahan is here. Amy, you're muted, but we see you're here.
I'm, am I muted?
You're not now. You were a minute ago.
Well, thank you.
Deirdre, you're here.
All right, Deirdre, Deirdre Hobson's here.
Okay. We are awaiting Clark. There is one hearing where we will need his presence, so we'll put that off for the moment. On the agenda tonight, we have four items, but two are being continued at the applicant's request, so I'll just start by getting those out of the way. Lauren, which projects are those again?
So in the sequence that's listed on the agenda, it will be the site plan review application for twenty-five and thirty Situate Hill filed by Crocker Two Realty Trust. That was continued previously from May twenty-fifth, and they have requested a continuance to our next meeting on July thirteenth.
Okay, so can I entertain a motion to continue that to July thirteenth at six thirty?
So moved.
Deirdre, you want a second or I'll second you?
A second.
Okay, jump right in. All right, all in favor? I'll start, I, Tom Kelly and I. Now you're muted.
Yeah, you did. Amy's muted.
Amy's muted, but we saw you, we saw you verbalize.
Though, that's the thing.
That's all right. All right, next, can I entertain a motion? What's the other part in the next project? Is the Wharf project forty-six border?
Yes, the next continuation that was requested was for site plan review for forty-six border street submitted by Co Lobster LLC courtesy of attorney Adam Brodsky. Again, that was also continued previously from May twenty-fifth, and they are seeking a continuation to our next meeting on July thirteenth.
Okay, and I have a motion to continue that to July thirteenth at six thirty.
I make a motion to continue.
Deirdre, I'll second it. Yeah, that's all right. That's all right. Tom Kelly and I.
Glassmore, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Okay, thank you. Just a heads up for the members of the board, July thirteenth is now getting packed with a lot of projects that are going to take some time, so be prepared for that one. We're gonna have an extensive meeting that night with the things that have been gotten, getting continued. All right, so next, we'll jump right into the first one we can do tonight. Lauren, that's what the, which the golf club?
Yes, that's a site plan review for the Cohasset Golf Club. The subject property is one seventy-five Lambert's Lane. This is applied for by the Cohasset Golf Club. We had opened the hearing on June fifteenth to immediately administratively continue per the applicant's request. So here tonight, on behalf of the applicant, we have Jeff Hassett, and then we have our peer review, Pat Brennan from Amory Engineers here as well. And Jeff, please just let me know if there's anyone else you'd like to see. I did see Glenn from the Cohasset Golf Club. I pulled him up, so if there's anyone else, just let me know the name.
Great, thanks, Lauren. Could you also promote Adam Brodsky?
Yes.
Okay, who's making the presentation, Jeff, you or Adam?
I think Adam's gonna lead it off here.
All right, Mr. Brodsky, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Good evening, everyone. I represent the Cohasset Golf Club, and we should also have available Gary Baldino, the general manager, Glenn Missiassek, and I pronounced his name incorrectly, most likely, our golf course superintendent, and Charles Flint should also be available. I don't know whether Charlie is participating. You obviously know Jeff Hassett, our professional engineer, and I'll provide a brief overview. The golf club is simply proposing to replace and upgrade its existing maintenance facility. They are proposing to demolish four existing buildings and construct three new buildings with an improved driveway and parking areas. We're proposing a new water service and underground utilities, but there are no sanitary facilities that are being proposed. We're proposing to improve the stormwater BMPs, which have been designed to comply with the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards, and the project requires a stormwater permit, which has been submitted to the Conservation Commission. There's no zoning relief required because this is an allowed use within the residency zoning district, and both the lot and the structures are conforming. And so with that very brief overview, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff to provide the specifics. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Adam. So I'll share my screen and I'll walk you through the site plans as well as the architectural plans. So the property address is one seventy-five Lambert's Lane, which is the location of the clubhouse, which is located here at the top of the page. The maintenance facility is located off of Cedar Street in this general area here, and as you can see, the only a butter is eighty-one Lambert's Lane, which is the town-owned transfer facility. There are no adjacent residential or commercial properties other than that. So the first sheet shows the existing conditions and the demolition. Come back up. When you approach the property, the curb cut off of Cedar Street is located right here, where you drive back to the main maintenance building. You first pass by a fuel pump that will be removed, as well as four existing maintenance buildings that that will also be removed. The next plan is the erosion control plan. The dash line is showing the limit of work, and there will be an erosion barrier at the entire, the entire perimeter of the work. There's also a stabilized construction entrance, and all the catch basins in the vicinity will have, will be covered during construction. And the equipment, well, the staging area will be located right here in. So the next plan is the site layout plan, and what this is showing is that coming off of Cedar Street in the location where the four buildings are being removed, the portion of the parking lot immediately along Cedar Street will be striped, so the shape will not be altered. Along the back, the edge of the asphalt will be reconfigured, and you end up having more green space in that area, adding some parking spaces here as well. And then moving up, currently, the employee parking is located right here, adjacent to the, the, the main building. That will continue to be the parking area. And then the access goes back to the three new buildings, and I want to note that this project doesn't increase the demand on parking. It'll still be the same number of employees, but we are open, we are creating twenty-four new parking spaces. The development itself consists of a fifty by two hundred storage building, and that's just a simple open floor plan. There's also an environmental center, which is an enclosed building where they will store under, under roof fertilizers and such. And then the third building is the fuel and wash center. The right-hand side of that building is a fully enclosed building where, with a wash system that recycles some water. And then the other side is an open area with, that's covered, where there's an above-ground fuel tank, and that's where that will be the new refueling location, under a cover in, in that, in that location. We're showing the fire truck maneuvers, showing that a fire truck can navigate the site. We're providing a fire truck turnaround at the end, where they would do a hammerhead turnaround and then return. We're noting that all, all lighting will be wall-mounted lights that are dark sky compliant with no spillover. And for trees, there are trees throughout the parking lot and area that will be three- to four-inch caliber maples, as well as cedar trees that are six to eight foot for screening. So the Cedar Street is down at the bottom of the page. In this area is about two hundred and fifteen feet of woods that will remain undisturbed. So the intent is that this area will not be visible to the public. It will not be open to the public. It's really just for the, for the employees. The next sheet is, actually going back to the site plan, to note, we do have a zoning table on the plan, and the only property line within the vicinity is this property line here, which we're more than a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty feet away from, so it does comply with all the required zoning setbacks.
May I ask, Jeff, the old building that's being torn down close to the Cedar, what's becoming of the site after it's torn down?
It's gonna be loomed and seated.
Okay.
A portion of the footprints right here would now, and here would now be some additional parking, but otherwise, a little bit seated.
Okay, even where this larger building is up here, you can't see where I'm pointing, but.
This building here?
Right, yeah, right there.
No, that, so that, that's a much newer building than the others, and that is going to remain.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, sorry. So the, for grading and utilities, th- these buildings will be for storage only. They do not have any office space. They do not have any restrooms. There will be a water service coming all the way from Cedar Street because the buildings do require fire suppression. And then electric and gas will come from that building that we were just talking about that is going to remain. The driveway will slope up at about a ten percent slope to this whole area will be level at approximately elevation sixty. There is a ledge in the vicinity, so we're working on finding a good balance to minimize the ledge removal. So we, we did provide a cut-fill plan that's showing we are favoring on fill as opposed to cutting in order to minimize that ledger removal. The drainage will go to three catch basins located between the buildings, as well as a fourth located at the back of the parking lot, and then piped into a sediment for bay and an infiltration basin. And all of the roof runoff similarly will be piped into that, into the infiltration basin as well. Lastly, for utilities, there is an industrial waste holding tank, which will, the floor drains will be, will be piped to. So that's a tight tank that needs to be pumped when it's filled. And in the drainage, it has been designed in order to promote groundwater recharge, to treat the water quality volume, and also to reduce the peak rates and volumes of runoff. So the next two sheets of the site plans are construction details, which I'll, I'll skip over. Moving on to the architectural plans, this is the main building. The floor plan, you know, very simple. It's an open building, open floor plan with overhead doors on the front as well as either end. This is the, the equipment, the equipment wash area in the smaller building is on this side, two doors to pull equipment in, and with the wash equipment in the middle. On the other side, this would be a roof-only, open air. The fuel tank is in the middle, and vehicles can pull in to refuel. There'll be grooves in the concrete around, and there will be a fire suppression system within the roof over that. And this is the, the environmental management building where fertilizers will be, will be stored. You'll notice that there are three low points where there will be floor drains. If there was any spill, that would go to that industrial waste holding tank. And then at the back of the lot, there are concrete storage bins for material such as soil. And then the elevations of the building, the, the elevations, they're steel buildings, and they'll have horizontal steel siding on the, the upper portion of the building with concrete on the bottom in ballards. So with that, we submitted this to give you kind of the timeline. We submitted it back on May third. We received peer review comments, and we submitted revisions back on June fifteenth. They addressed, addressed the peer review comments. We have been in front of Conservation, and we've addressed their comments, we believe, and also addressed the comments from Fire Chief Doc Ray. And most recently, recently, we received a second letter from Amory Engineering noting that we've addressed all of their comments. So with that, I'll turn it over to, to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. Mr. Brennan, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Jeff mentioned, I, I reviewed the set of plans and submitted a letter to the board dated May thirty-first. There was twelve comments in that letter, the majority of which were related to the stormwater design calculations. Couple of the comments were related to adding that zoning table that Jeff had mentioned, some snow storage areas, and a detail for the concrete dumpster pad. And they did address all the comments. I, I did note in my letter that they didn't fully address my comment about the sediment for bay and how, how it was modeled. However, I did a quick model, taking the area of the bottom area of that for bay out of the calculation, and I'm confident that the stormwater design will still adequately mitigate post-development runoff, so it won't increase over existing conditions. And, and the other thing with this is even the discharge from that new detention basin actually goes into a wetland on site that it would never escape that wetland anyway, so all the stormwater runoff would remain on site to begin with. My only other comment, and you know, perhaps Lauren could speak to this, was I, I had made a comment about whether or not there should be a fire hydrant on site near the, near the new buildings, and I had seen that in the response to comments letter, it responded to Chief Dog Ray's comments. One of his comments was a question about how far the nearest fire hydrant was to the proposed buildings, which Jeff's response was just five hundred and fifty-five feet away. So I assume the fire department's had a chance to look at it since then, as to whether or not there's a hydrant on site. I just, I'm just not privy to what that decision was, but I just wanted wanna make the board aware of that, that I just wanted to make sure the fire hydrant was, I mean, the fire department was comfortable with, with the design as it is. And other than that, they, they've addressed my comments, and I'm satisfied with the, the stormwater design and the site design in general.
All right, thank you, Pat. Appreciate that. Before we get to the board comments, Lauren, have we heard from the fire department on that issue? Because that jumped out at me this afternoon when I read Amy's comments.
Yes, we've been in communication with the fire department on this. I would suggest that the board does close this hearing tonight, that you just condition that I just get one more confirmation from the fire chief, if that's acceptable, but he has been privy to these plans.
Okay.
I, I did speak to the fire chief, and he indicated that five hundred and fifty feet, five feet to the nearest hydrant was adequate, being that it's also working off of a twelve-inch water main. But, but that condi- that condition is perfectly.
Yeah, forgive me if I don't take your word for it.
Yeah, and I, I, I welcome the condition as well.
Yeah.
The, in, in the state, the state minimum is eight hundred feet, or the state maximum, so it's within that eight hundred feet that, that is allowable.
Okay, thank you. All right, Lauren, is there anything you want to add from your review of the project?
I would just add that I, I did hear from a couple of applicants, just curious about the project. This project had a long list of a butters, just based on the size of the parcel and the reach that went around three hundred feet, but there were no concerns, just more curiosity, and a lot of people surprised that they were considered a butters of the golf course, but no, no concerns raised.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, I'll open up for board comment. Where did I leave off last time with Deirdre? I'll, I'll start with me then, alphabetically this time around, and my only issue is that I realized the ledge protection bylaw isn't in play, but can you just go over again, Jeff, what you're doing with ledge? And, and I asked the question only even when it doesn't apply in the spirit of that bylaw. I, I hope applicants will take concerns about removing ledge maybe more seriously than had been done in the past. That's all. But could you just go over that again quickly?
Sure. Yeah, so the ledge was something we discussed quite a bit between the project team. You know, it's very expensive to remove, so the intent here was finding a good balance where we're not, we don't want to, to, we're, we're favoring fill. We'd rather fill over the ledge than, than remove it. So we've picked elevation sixty as a good balance point, which that, the elevation, existing elevation sixty contour runs right where my cursor's running. The limit of work doesn't go all that far, so that's generally the area where ledge has to be removed.
All right, thank you.
And I can elaborate a little further. We did do a cut and fill plan that we provided to Conservation, and I, I anticipated about seventeen hundred cubic yards of ledge. And that includes, you know, going further down for the foundation, the footings, for the drainage, et cetera.
All right, thank you for that. I have nothing further, Amy.
Uh, thank you, and thank you all the respondents for very clear presentations. I'd just like to talk a little bit about the traffic pattern that will be in play while this project is being done. Can you talk about how people are going to access the, this site, whether there's going to be any conflicts or any need to have, you know, guarding in some way so that people can be safely moved through this area?
Yeah, so the only traffic that this area should receive are the maintenance employees. The grounds grow, and they will continue to be able to get access to property and, and park in the parking spaces where they typically do now. It's not an area, and, and they'll be familiar with the work going on. It's not an area that's open to the public where you would expect, you know, people not familiar with what's going on, showing up. I guess with the exception of the, the people that do play tennis, and they would be able to park in the same area, whether it be in front of this building or right along the fence.
So there won't be any conflict with the refuse site, the dump?
Oh, no, not at all. No, the, the access to the dump is, you know, further down, off the page over here.
All right, thank you.
Is that it, Amy?
I'm done, thank you.
Deirdre? Deirdre still with us?
Oh, Deirdre, you're on mute.
Here I am, here I am, sorry. I get it. I'm sorry, Jeff, I just, I had a quick question. The wash center, you know, be vehicles that will have fertilizer, et cetera. Can you just say it again for me where that water's gonna go?
I mean, it's a self-contained system that, that filters and treats the water and recycles it, so there's no, there's no discharge of water from that.
Thank you. That was my only question. Sorry, I missed that.
All right, I suppose the board is finished. Are any members of the public have any comments or questions? Do we have anything on the Q and A, Lauren?
I have nothing on the Q and A. I'm not seeing any. I know there's two members of the public here, actually, that are here for our next application.
Okay. All right, then, I'll entertain a motion regarding this project under twelve point, three hundred twelve point six. Anybody care to make a motion, or shall I, shall I make it?
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Yeah, I, just, just to elaborate, I think the, the motion would be that we, we make the findings of the three hundred twelve point six be one through six. All of those conditions have been satisfied. The project did an affirmative site plan review with the condition that the fire department let us know whether, what its feelings are on an additional hydrant, and if it were to require a hydrant, that that be incorporated into the project. So, can someone second that?
Second that.
All right. Any discussion of the motion? Well, okay, all in favor? Amy, I'll start with you.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Deirdre?
Deirdre Hobson, I.
All right, Tom Kelly and I. All right, thank you all, and good luck with the project.
All right, thank you very much, everyone.
All right, um, next, one, one sec, let me. So. All right, so I, I've tried to text Clark about where he is and whether we can expect him. We're not sure quite what the answer is, but yes, Lauren, go ahead.
I texted Clark earlier for the same reason. He's actually had a personal family emergency and had to run out unexpectedly. So with that, I'm gonna pivot a question to our council. Is there anything precluding us from opening this new hearing, beginning and continuing and applying the Mullen rule so that Clark could feasibly vote on this at a later date?
As long as, as long as the town has actually adopted the Mullen rule, then yes, he can do that.
Okay, we do have to call him home, please.
Okay, so obviously, the board could not vote tonight. You'd have to keep the, the hearing open until the next session at which Clark is present.
Um, all right, with that, yes, Amy, before I.
Could you please explain the condition under which we're doing this?
Yes, I will. So for the benefit of Deirdre and the public, we had begun a hearing on this project, but because of the election, in the meantime, we didn't have the necessary quorum to vote on it after the election, and we have to start it all over, which was why we were gonna open the hearing tonight. The Mullen rule allows us to, so for a special permit, we need a vote of four members, four of five, to approve a special permit. So we'd need all four of us here tonight, and the Mullen rule, as I understand it, allows us, in, in the case of an emergency, to have a missing member actually vote on it after certifying that he's heard the tape and, or read the minutes and, and knows what was discussed at the meeting. So our associate member is missing. Otherwise, if he was here, he'd step up tonight and be the fourth vote, but he's not, and Clark has indicated a family emergency, which can be used to invoke the rule. So we will open the hearing. We'll go forward. Clark will need to make sure he sees the tape of the hearing, and then he can vote at the next opportunity. So with that, Lauren, if you wouldn't mind reading the public hearing notice, since we have to reopen the hearing and start afresh.
Yes, absolutely. I just had that in front of me. Hold on one moment, please.
I hate to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. I actually pulled it up, and then when I went to message Clark, I lost it, so bear with me for a moment. All right, here we are. Notice of public hearing, class of planning board, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty A and Section three hundred dash eleven of the class zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform webinar ID eight two, eight two one, one four, one two, three, five, seven, eight, password nine, six, zero, eight, five, zero, on Wednesday, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, at six thirty PM, for a land alteration special permit for property being shown on Cohasset Assessor's Map, F five, thirty, twelve, ninety Howard Gleason Road, Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero, two, zero, two, five. The application is for proposed removal of existing dwelling, garage, pool, and hardscape to be replaced with a new dwelling, garage, pool, and hardscape involving above-grade ledge removal of less than ten cubic yards in soil to be removed. The application is submitted by John and Jamie Burbow, courtesy of Cavan Arrow Consulting. This application, previously advertised for an April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two public hearing date, is being re-advertised for a new public hearing date due to administrative requirements. A copy of the application plans and accompanying documents are on file in the town clerk's office at Cohasset Town Hall, forty-one Highland Avenue, with office hours of Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM, Tuesday, eight thirty AM to seven PM, and Friday, eight thirty AM to one PM. Electronic copies of said application can be obtained by contacting Planning Director Lauren Lind via email at lind@coast@ma.org. Any person wishing or interested to be heard on said application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. Signed, Thomas Callahan, Chair, Planning Board.
Thank you. And, and let, let me just begin by apologizing to the applicant and their team for the procedural quirks that have put us into this place today, but we'll, we'll get through the hearing tonight, and, and we'll be able to vote on it at our next opportunity. All right, so who is presenting for the applicant tonight?
Brendan Sullivan with Cavan Arrow Consulting.
You, you have the floor, Mr. Sullivan.
Great, thank you. I'm here with the, I think, the owner, John and Jamie Burbow, and also the landscape architect, Sean Pappich.
And, and even though we went through this before in the first hearing, we have to treat this like it's brand new, so if you could, you know, explain the whole project for the record to us.
Sure, so I believe you can see the plan up on the screen now.
We can.
So, yeah, so for the newcomers, per se, this is ninety Howard Gleason Road, existing dwelling, non-conforming to setback in a front yard setback, a side yard setback. uh, non-conforming, uh, to setback in a front yard setback, a side yard setback, uh, non-conforming, uh, garage, um, on the rear of the property, uh, it's not conforming with, we expect to lot here as well. Uh, so we're proposing to, um, uh, demo the existing house, um, have a new house proposed, uh, conforming to all setbacks. Uh, we've also raised the house, lifted the house approximately, um, oh, approximately four feet from what the first floor is in the existing house. Existing house first floor is about elevation fifteen, uh, proposed first floor is about elevation nineteen. Um, so we're proposing, uh, the new dwelling, um, pool commander and pool basically in the side yard, um, and a new carriage house in the rear yard, as well as a, uh, the curb cut is staying the same. Uh, we have proposed, um, auto court, which is much closer to the existing, the proposed house than what the existing house is. We're also proposing, there's, there's a tree in the front yard here that we are, we are going to maintain. It's a, um, I wish I knew the name of it, but I can't think of it off the top of my head. So anyways, as far as ledge removal, um, we originally came in for some ledge removal. But since we did raise the house, it's now a matter of we're not removing any ledge. We are merely burying ledge, um, approximately a hundred and ten square feet of it um, on the west side of the proposed pool and cabana. Um, what we're proposing to do is, um, in the, in the existing basement, um, if you can tell by, if I can get this picture up here. And the existing basement, uh, there is some ledgeau crops, um, which is, oh, the basement floor is about elevation nine. Uh, the elevation over in the front, which would be the front yard area, is about elevation, gonna be about elevation ten. So some of this ledgeau cropping, which is in the basement, uh, will now be exposed. If, if, if we indeed, uh, maintain that. But we also have an area behind the proposed cabana and behind the proposed portion, the garage, which is attached to the main house, which, whi- which we are lowering the grade next to the adjacent ledge. So our proposal is to, um, is to, to mitigate the hundred and ten square feet that we are burying, and we're proposing to expose, um, approximately a hundred and seventy square feet over here, and approximately fifty square feet in the front yard for a total of, uh, two hundred and twenty feet. So that would be a two to one ratio, um, that you would gain in exposed ledge for the site. Um, we believe that is within reason with the, uh, with the, uh, current zoning bylaw. Um, I think that's about it. Take any, uh, questions or comments? We have been to conservation, uh, we have a notice of intent, uh, we have a stormwater permit. Uh, we've also been in front of, um, this group, um, most of you for a large home review, um, those all have all been approved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Um, Lauren, we didn't have any, uh, outside peer review, did we?
No, we did not.
Okay, do you have any, uh, comments to offer?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. All right, then we'll start, uh, with the board. Amy, you're up first.
Um, I would start by saying what I said at the last meeting regarding the site, which was it will be very useful to have the materials that are available from the site to be recycled, if that's possible.
We, we are going to try, we are gonna try and maintain most, uh, as much as we can, as the, the patio, there's some landscape stones, uh, flagstones, uh, granite stones, and we are gonna maintain on site as well.
That's, that's good to hear. Um, I do wonder whether or not, uh, there, there's any concern on the part of the owner regarding storm surge and, and sea level rise, and if there's been any discussion about, um, how the placement of this structure is going to be affected, given that we have storms and given that Howard Gleason Road always floods.
Yeah, so, so Howard Gleason Road does, I mean, elevation seven comes across, um, the road here. So out in the road, it could be just below seven. I don't know about six, five, but, um, so the existing house, um, was in the floodplain. Uh, we pulling the proposed house out of the floodplain, that, that's the hundred year floodplain, which is elevation eleven. Uh, so we're pulling the house out of that, and we're also raising the house as well. Um, so, um, that will pull it, you know, we're pulling it. The existing house is this red outline, uh, showing up in here. So as I said, it, it's much closer to the property line, it's much lower, uh, so we are pulling the house back and raising it as well. Um, and, and nor are we doing much of any fill in that area in the front yard either, uh, in the floodplain. Um, maybe some minimal landscaping is to straighten out some lines in there, but, um, but hardly any fill going in the front yard that would, that would, you know, obviously elevate the sea level rise.
Um, will there be a basement?
Yes. Full basement. The basement is about elevation, um, elevation eight.
So, um, are there any, um, requirements or concerns about a basement at that level?
So we have a, um, a basement discharge system, um, over here as well. Uh, so it'll be a, uh, um, some pumps, uh, with a sump pump, um, that will discharge the water into this infiltration system, and then, uh, dis- and then discharge the overflow onto the lawn area. All of the roof leaders are connected to this infiltration system as well, to be in the lawn area. Um, as per, you know, that's what the conservation, we originally, the, the modeling does work with only putting half of the roof leaders in there, but we're, we're putting all of the roof leaders, uh, we're recharging the entire, um, the entire roof, uh, for the, um, for the, for the dwelling and for the carriage house as well.
All right, thank you.
All set? Uh, De- Deirdre?
I, I just was wondering if you've had any conversation with the executive members of the yacht club regarding the parking lot that is exactly directly on the opposite side of that catch basin, uh, with the possibility that there may be overflow into the lawn, and what happens then is it seeps into the parking lot on the other side of the wall, and that area that the cars park in becomes very mushy. I'm just curious if you've had a con- if owners have had a conversation with the yacht club, or if the, you, your engineering friend has talked with them.
Um, I have not personally. Um, so there was a catch, and I believe maybe this is the catch basin here you're referring to, but the yacht club, um, even though the yacht club property is next door, that's.
No, we, they actually own, that's what Mike, that, uh, where that catch basin is, um, near the carriage house, the parking lot on the other side of that wall belongs to the yacht club there.
Oh, over here, okay. Um, yeah. There's an, there is an.
Brendan, this is John Burbow.
Sure.
Apologize, I'm in the car. Um, yeah, no, I've met with the, uh, the Commodore and the head of the Long Range Planning Committee, Eric Swanson, and talked to them about their concern that we didn't want them to park in front, um, perhaps for them to continue to park in front, but they didn't express any concern about, uh, I have met with them.
Okay. Thank you. That was it, Tom.
Okay, thank you, Deirdre. Um, well, uh, I have two sets of comments. Uh, one just occurred to me, uh, Amy's question about the floodplain hadn't ma- had me, uh, think before whether articles, um, what is the article about our floodplain district, uh, Article eleven? No, nine of our bylaw, is it?
It's nine, yes.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know if anybody, uh, Mr. Sullivan or anybody on our side has thought about whether Article nine is in play at all. Um, I'm going to also assume that with Concom, you've talked about floodplain issues with them, it would be within their jurisdiction. But has anybody, like, Mr. Sullivan, have you looked at Article nine? Is it, is it in play here at all that we have to be concerned about?
Well, we, we, um, we have spoken with John Howland about that, and he did not think we need to file with zoning for the, uh, I'm assuming that's the Floodplain and Watership Protection District?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Um, he didn't believe we need to file.
Okay, yeah, that is a ZBA special permit. All right, I, I would just, if, Lauren, I'll ask you, um, and I'll ask Mr. Sullivan too. For the next meeting before we have our vote, just some certification that, uh, Lauren, you and John have looked at Article nine, and that, you know, given the project and what they're proposing and moving the house out of the floodplain, uh, they, they don't think there's anything that needs to be done under Article nine. I'd just like that established in writing, if we could.
Absolutely. I'll speak to John Howland about that.
Okay, um, and then the other thing, of course, at the first hearing, I was, uh, you know, with this being the first application of the ledge removal bylaw, I had said that I wanted to take a sort of absolutist view of it, that it's not to be removed, uh, and start out with interpreting the bylaw that way. I, I have to admit that the compensation of exposing other ledge is a very unique and way of dealing with the problem. And, and frankly, with flood storage, we would do the same thing. If there was flood storage being taken away, there'd have to be compensatory flood storage somewhere else. If you take wetlands away, there'd have to be compensatory wetlands somewhere else. So I, I, I'm not averse to the idea. I, I think it's a good idea, uh, frankly. So I, I applaud it as being creative, you know, in, in our brand new interpretation of a brand new bylaw. So, uh, I, I'm comfortable with that now. I, I, you know, from the last hearing, you know, I was a little concerned about having covering anything up here, but I, I think this is a good solution to it. So, uh, so I'm okay with that part of it. You know, it's a shame to see this old house come down, but I understand why. Uh, I, I think you've addressed the issues, uh, that the new bylaw raises. All right, with that, then, um, members of the public, anyone? Anybody out there?
There's, uh, there's nothing in the Q and A.
Okay, I don't know if the Borbos want to add anything before we sign off for the evening with this.
Um. You guys do, and, um, no, but the project, we did look at, um, trying to preserve the home, but for a lot of the reasons that we've talked about, the flooding, the condition of the home currently structural and other reasons, we did look at it, but, uh, it made sense just to, to start anew, and we're just trying to work as best we can with the town.
Okay. All right, um, so what we will do tonight is we will finish up. We cannot take a vote, uh, at the moment. Um, myself, Carolyn, Lauren can work on drafting a decision for this. Um, Clark will need to review this tape, and Clark can then vote, and we can all vote. In terms, are we okay on timing if this was extended to the thirteenth? Lauren, we, we, we would be good moving this to the thirteenth for the vote?
Sorry, yes, I didn't realize that question. Is that me?
Okay. I, I, you know, the only other alternate, I know we have a joint meeting next week, but I'm wondering if we could squeeze in a vote after we're finished with that matter, but let's, let's leave it for the thirteenth. We'll make it the first item of business and get it out of the way. So, you know, if, if you, you and John make the determination that Article nine's not invoked, just circulate that in writing to the rest of the board.
Okay.
We'll, we'll make that part of the record as well. All right, so, uh, to the Borbos and their team, thank you. Uh, we will have a vote for you on the thirteenth of July, which will be our next meeting. Uh, we will do that first order of business at six thirty. Uh, and then you should be good to go.
Great.
You just need a motion to continue.
All right, I, I'll, I'll, I'll just make, make the motion to continue this to July thirteenth at six thirty. Second, please.
A second, I second.
Okay. All in favor, Tom Callahan, I. Amy?
I said Amy Glassmore, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Again, thank you for being creative. We should have pinned it at two and one, two for one compensation requirement. Anyway, all right, so, uh, that concludes our formal business for the evening. The next item I want to get to is Lauren had circulated something about the affordable housing units that are available on the lottery. If you could announce that to the public, for the benefits of the public.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. So there will be, um, there's four affordable housing, deed restricted affordable housing units that will be coming available located on Cushing Road in Coasette. There's one studio and two, uh, I'm sorry, three, four bedroom, three, two bedrooms, one studio and three, two bedrooms. There will be an information session held by MCO Housing, which is the, the contracting agent doing, conducting the affordable housing lottery. They will held that information session via Zoom on June twenty ninth, and their information packet, people can contact my office. I, I have applications in the office. I'd be happy to email anything. Like I said, information session on June twenty ninth. There will be, applications are due at the end of July, and then a lottery will be conducted, uh, in the end of August. And there is a local preference for two of those units for the first initial lease up. That includes, um, existing tenants who are eligible under the income requirements. It includes residents, existing residents of the town of Coasette, people who have ha- someone in the household who is an existing school or school employee or a school participant, whether it's a school-aged child. It also includes people who are, uh, you know, a town employee or a e- employee of a local business. So it's a sort of broad with there that includes the local preference. So it's a good opportunity for anyone who is interested in affordable housing rental opportunities in town. So, um, that is that announcement, that just to let the board know, these are the four off-site units that were supplied in conjunction with the special permit located down in the Harbor Village Business Overlay District for one twenty-four and eighty-seven Elm Street. Per their special permit and the inclusionary zoning requirements, they were required to do three affordable units. They had shows them the off-site option, and they actually decided to exceed that and provide four units. So this is fulfilling that requirement, and these units are, they'll be ready to move in as soon as this lottery is done. So this is exciting news on the front of affordable housing for our town.
I understand the, the, the building on Cushing Road is, now has a permanent, um, covenant to keep this property permanently, uh, as affordable units. So it will benefit the town for a long time to come. All right, uh, thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments about it? I just, I hope people in the community, if you know anyone who, who might, uh, qualify for the local preference, uh, please get your applications in and attend the session next, next week. Um, Lauren, anything else you have?
Yes, I'll just make a few date announcements for the board. Um, next week, a week from today, we'll be meeting in joint session with the select board to make the appointment for one year for an unfulfilled planning board member seat. There is one statement of interest submitted by Chris Flex, and he will be, um, since there's no one else, we won't be doing interviews. It'll just be an appointment made for one year. So that'll be taking place via Zoom next week. Um, and other announcements, tomorrow evening, tomorrow afternoon, I should say, there will be an Elm Street Corridor Working Group meeting at three thirty PM. This group will be reconvening for the first time since February to review cost estimates of alternatives for potential reconfiguration of Elm Street, as well as the intersection that is known as later the Harbor End Intersection right in front of one twenty-four Elm Street. The working group will review that information, come to a final recommendation, and then they'll return to the select board for sort of next steps on that. Other upcoming dates, just to keep on your calendar, um, our July meeting dates are July thirteenth and July twenty seventh. And I won't go further into your schedule at this point, but tho- those are some dates to keep on your calendar. Also, last date to put in your calendar, um, Master Plan Implementation Committee will be reconvening for the first time in, in a couple of months, I should say, on Monday, July eleventh.
All right, all right. I'll add to that, that the zoning bylaw working group, uh, we have, I scheduled a meeting for July sixth, Wednesday evening to, or get that group up and coming. At the moment, it has four members, and so can proceed. And I've been in a number of discussions with the select board and with, uh, the zoning board and the for, open space committee about filling the three vacancies. Two of them right now are assigned to the zoning board and to the open space committee, and we'll see what happens. But it's likely on the sixth, we will have our sort of reorganizational meeting with perhaps just four people. Uh, in, in that regard, I also had a very productive, uh, meeting with Carolyn and her partner, Judge Cutler, about having KP's assistance in writing the bylaw, the new bylaw going forward. It was a great meeting, and they're going to be a great help to us going forward. We are going to have a very aggressive schedule. If there's citizens who are interested in serving on that committee, uh, let us know, let myself or Lauren or Jack Creighton of the select board know. Uh, but it will be a, a fairly aggressive schedule for that committee going through the summer and into the fall and into all town meeting. Um, this board has a formal role in reviewing zoning articles, and Lauren and I are talking about October is probably the time we'll be doing that, and it could be quite, you know, the committee will, the working group will ultimately decide, but there could be a large number of articles sort of doing the reorganization. Sort of doing the reorganization, housekeeping is step one. And the substantive, real substantive changes would come in the Springtown meeting in twenty-three. But and then for for, we mentioned earlier, the meeting for the thirteenth now has the Wharf Project, Black Horse Lane Project, the Cituate Hill Project, anything else?
Yes, yes, there are a couple of things.
Those are three that are going to absorb some time for us and I given their importance, I'm going to, you know, I can let you know ahead of time, I'm going to give them some time, but not let it get crazy, but those three are on and what else do we have?
Yes, okay, so sorry, I'm just pulling up my notes. We have we have the new Village Business District Special Permit Site Plan Review for fifty-five South Main Street, which is the gas station site starting.
That's another big one.
We have a preliminary subdivision application for ninety-four Black Horse Lane. That is new. You have a continued discussion on a common driveway application for the same site, ninety-four Black Horse Lane. Then you have the continuation, as you heard tonight, for forty-six Border Street, for twenty-five and thirty Cituate Hill as well as ninety Howard Gleason Road.
Have the materials for the village, for the gas station site been circulated yet?
Informally, they're on the website, but I did not want to bombard you all with information.
I don't know, and I I I just wanted to see if they were available yet. It's something that everybody. I I'll just say that I I seen them and it's different than what was presented in preliminary discussions with the developer group. So I just want to make sure the board looks into that application closely when it comes. So we are going to have a busy night on the thirteenth. So everybody get ready for that. And Carolyn, you too, you know, you're going to be up on some of those issues, so. Amy, I see. All right, so I I have nothing else to report as far as liaison assignments or anything else. Anybody else? Amy, I see your hand up. You got something?
We lost Amy.
Well, where'd you go, Amy? Deirdre, you got anything you'd like to bring up, discuss?
I just had a quick question. It was, it's about next week's meeting at the selectmen. Is that something we we don't vote on, right?
Yes, we do. It's a joint vote of our board and their board. It won't take more than a half hour. And I I will say this, we're probably not going to do like a formal interview with Chris, but if any of you don't know him and have some questions, feel free to put some together, but I'd ask you to just, you know, give them in advance to Lauren and I, just so we know what to, I can let the selectmen know what to expect, but it is a a majority vote of both boards combined, so that we have to do the blue point, Chris. For the record, Kevin has indicated he wants to stay in the associate seat, so he's going to continue with that.
Okay, no, I just had a, because I I may be up in Maine, so I'm hoping. Where I am, I have to go up and deal with my parents' estate, so I.
No, I hear you. That's that's fine.
I will do my best to be on the call.
It won't take more than a few minutes, I would think. And and it's it's not something critical like a special permit vote. If you're not there, you know, it's fatal, but it's it's supposed to be a majority of both boards who make the appointment. We have had members in the past who participate by car coming from Vermont, speeding down the road at eighty miles an hour. So, you know, there's. I don't recommend it, but there's very few excuses that are acceptable.
No, I'll I'll do the best I can. They're up there.
Please, but family, family first, so. Amy.
The items, one is Lauren, can you please circulate the the code to attend the Elm Street Corridor working group meeting tomorrow?
Yes, certainly. The access information, just for anyone who may be listening, is on the public meeting agenda on the town meeting calendar for the Elm Street Corridor Working Group. But I will send it to you as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the second is that if we bring things up on zoning related issues in the fall, are we going to create circumstances that are difficult for us as we've learned from the last time? So I'm just raising that as an issue. We don't have to discuss it now, but I do want to raise it because I think it could potentially be something we want to think about. The third item I wanted to.
I'll 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 address that, Amy. It's that one of the things, because it was a simple definitional change, yes, we did not do a lot of public outreach beforehand. There will, the working group, another part of the proposal that we have been talking about for months and will be doing this summer is a public forum, at least one session, probably two, maybe three. Our hearings, when we review the zoning articles that come up for town meeting, will also all be public. So I would expect that there will be plenty of public exposure and vetting of this, unlike the last time.
Okay, thank you. The last is that I just wanted to report on the oyster bar, which we approved. So I don't know how many of you walk by there, but it turns out that Lenny's had access to the that area with between the buildings and they now have a set of chairs and tables and beer taps that are available for public usage in that general vicinity. And I'm wondering why that didn't actually necessarily come to us? And whether or not that's something we ought to be thinking about, but the other thing is, is it clearly constrains the oyster bar. There's no question about it and that's going to be a real challenge.
I I I noticed walking by that the the oyster bar seems to have some other construction difficulties that they're a trend that I didn't anticipate. They seem to be running into more things. I don't know, you know, I would expect, you know, they're missing a good part of the season, but to be open, but. Amy brings up a good point. The oyster bar needed permit. You know, I don't know that unless Lauren, you'll tell us, we're still under emergency outdoor allowances, but.
So the the oyster bar needed a permit because their container exceeded the two hundred square foot threshold of commercial space. Whereas.
They're planning to play music.
So for for live or mechanical music, that would be a different circumstance, but the actual, I know the the facility that you're talking about that's been set up outside, I don't believe that 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 small piece of the bar actually triggers over two hundred square feet. And they're a lot, I know that their music is allowed in the restaurant. I'm not sure how it was permitted. I know they got a license through the select board to allow them to do the outdoor seating. I don't know that they're planning to do live mechanical entertainment down there. So I I think we're just running into nuances here.
Yeah. Okay, well, it would be would be worthwhile to know how that's all going to go down and I mean, because there's the potential for food and drinking and I mean, I I think it's, I think it's great. It looks great. I I just think that it, we've got a congestion problem.
All right, well, I I don't, well. Again, that that they use that patio area during COVID as their outdoor seating. The selectmen control liquor licenses. I I understand they're having drinks and just serving tacos out of that shack. You know, it's not like their full menu is available, from what I read from their advertising. If if it's the size of the structure they put up isn't triggering our jurisdiction, so be it. The selectmen are aware of both projects. I'm assuming that alley is publicly owned property and they're letting Lenny's do it. You know, I I think from our board's perspective, what we can do is have John confirm to us that there's no jurisdiction of our board over what they're doing.
I just think it's important that we are aware of it.
Yeah.
I have anything. I have no.
You were you were break, you were breaking up there, but.
I just think that it is something that we should have some undone.
Okay.
You broke up a bit at the end, but I I got the gist of what you were saying and I'll talk to John Helen just to get some confirmation about it.
All right. And speaking of John, you know, a couple of weeks ago, talking about some new initiatives to do, we were looking for maybe a monthly update from John on projects that were already been permitted and where they stand. I know from the Harbor Project, they now complied with their affordable housing component. They are, I've I've been told that discussion, that part of our permit was there has to be a necessary easement agreement regarding the public park area and the captain's wall, not just the easements over the parking area. And I understand from today that there's discussions, at least at the council level, to start talking about the agreement that needs to happen between the town and and the property owner over that, so. I know other other people not on this board anymore, raised issues about a performance bond. That's not required until they begin construction on the new building. So if Amy, I mean, Lauren, if you can just check with John, you know, maybe at our next meeting, whether we discuss it, have time to discuss it or not, he can at least circulate a little written update of all outstanding projects and where where they are in compliance. I think, Amy, that was the gist of what you were looking for when we suggested, you suggested that idea. Just to know what's going on from time to time. It gets John out in the field, which I'm sure he's out in the field, but we we do need to follow up, especially some of the bigger projects that are going on.
I have only one other comment, which is about the solution to the parking that is at least initially being proposed by the Lobster Pound and the renovation of Atlantica.
Let me stop you to the extent that's dealing with the permit. I don't know that we should discuss it right now. Certainly on the site plan review that we are involved with, we have to resolve that issue. There has to be adequate parking. It's one of the findings we have to make. But since it is a particular project, I just don't think right now comments about that. I mean, if you have some general thought about the harbor in the village in general, that's fine, but I wouldn't tie it into the particular project. So anybody else have anything? Carolyn, anything in particular?
No, just to let you know that Lauren, I did send the opinion on ninety-four Black Horse Lane, so enjoy reading that before July thirteenth.
Yes, everybody, please do read that. Lauren, make sure Deirdre has the other attorney's opinion from a couple of weeks ago. With that meeting, we we have to open a new preliminary subdivision hearing and then we're reopening the common driveway hearing.
Well, so technically, it's not actually a public hearing. It's just an application. So that's why we're continuing it, but it's not a continued hearing.
Right, and then and the current owner, the the new owner can piggyback on the prior common driveway application, as I understand it. Not to put you on the spot.
Yes, I think I I think that's perfectly fine.
Well, just just to prepare yourself, I think since we there there is really a threshold legal issue about how we approach this whole thing, so. You're going to be the lead speaker on the thirteenth and then I'll give Mr. Watzke his his stage, because this is really a a legal decision to make at the beginning, you know, before we hear the merits of the project. But everybody study the project, study the various plans that have been out there, study Mr. Watzke's opinion, study Carolyn's opinion. We have some very significant decisions to make. Yes, Lauren.
I just want to let everyone know, especially Deirdre, since she's new and catching up on things, I will reach out and redistribute any background information that you need, all the information that I have already. I'll reach out tomorrow so that you start, can start looking over that before the thirteenth. And as anything new comes up, because we have a deadline, you know, any new information needs to be in one week before. So you may get some more information, but at least I'll be in touch tomorrow as you can start to catch up on those things.
Carolyn, are we allowed, are we allowed to put Watzke's opinion and your opinion out on the active application page?
You certainly can. I mean, I I know that, you know, this is technically my opinion and legal advice to the board. But you have to be able to discuss it at the public meeting in order to be able to take the action that you need to take on the applications pending. So I mean, it's ultimately your decision as to whether or not you want to post it and put it out there on the website. But I honestly, I'm going to have to discuss verbally most of what would be in that opinion anyway.
That that that's why I asked, because, you know, we also will have at the last hearing on a butter's group, a lot of people are interested in this and you know, the the other side is relying on a legal opinion. We're going to rely on a legal opinion or something in between the the or the opinions, you know, and I think since it's all going to be discussed, why not put it out there? But I don't know if anybody on the board has a strong opinion about that. You know, we can, I think we can make that decision administratively. If you want to let me know pro or con on that. I I think in fairness to Attorney Watzke, we would need to ask him if he's comfortable with that as well. It's, you know, it's his client's material, but again, for a public, you know, public process, so. If you wouldn't mind reaching out to Watzke, either either Carolyn or Lauren, pick one, if he's comfortable with it being put up on the website. We we can decide that later administratively without deciding it here. So. Amy, your hands back up again, or have you ever took it down?
No, I I did take it down and I'm just wondering, is it custom to put up a a legal opinion prior to a meeting, or is it something that is discussed in real time?
Usually it would be discussed in real time. The fact that it's discussed out in public, you know, it's attorney client privilege with the town board is a little tricky area. It's not as clean as myself and one of my clients, but maybe Carolyn will agree or disagree on that. But, you know, we are going to be discussing it out in public. So the privilege part, you know, if it's disclosed, privilege part of it kind of goes away. So I, again, normally you wouldn't, normally wouldn't ask, but it's going to be discussed openly. And the question is, given the public interest in the project, do we do we put it out there for everybody to see? So. I know, again, we don't have to make that decision right now. Carolyn, if you have strong thoughts, pro or con, certainly let me know. I'll defer to your your judgment on that, but. I just think this is a unique situation and and it and it has a number of ramifications for certain bylaw sections in the future, not just for this project, if this comes up again. So I I I think it's it's different from maybe other garden variety legal opinions that we are getting from both sides. All right. All right, without anybody else having anything, I thank you all. Sorry, it wasn't a longer meeting. I guess I'm afraid it was. You teed up for a really long meeting the next time. See you next week, hopefully for a very short meeting. So entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, I made the motion. All right, roll call, Tom Kelly and I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Okay, we're all set. Lauren, Carolyn, thank you.